The agenda for the full planning board, not the minor in front of me.
Maybe it's underneath.
Oh, okay. All right, without further delay, thank you for your patience. Adequate announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Didich, Mr. Mealy, Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We have our planner, Ms. Winters, our engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Stein.
All right, will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is open to the general public. Are there any members of the public who have something not on the agenda for tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. Application number 22:535, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just for the record, Fred Mio, the engineer and surveyor on the project. My right is Mrs. Carr. She's the owner of the property, the applicant.
All right, I'll swear you both in. If you both please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. Mio, just provide the board with some background on your licensing and experience.
I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, and planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified, certified in this, engineer. I've been doing this more than years than I want to admit, but it's been around a while.
Thank you.
And I have a bachelor of sciences in engineering. Here's some good technology.
Thank you. And you've testified before our board before.
Numerous times.
Yes.
One of my favorite boards.
Okay, well, we don't have any waivers to discuss, so feel free to provide us with your application.
The only thing I do want to clarify to the board, and I apologize, I missed it, Nora asked me about it, and I looked on the architectural plans. It's a four-bedroom house. They show bedrooms two, three, four, and five. There is no bedroom one because it doesn't exist. So I'll have to change the five to the one. So that's what the proposal is. The proposal is to take the property at the corner of Deerfield and Papsco and subdivide it into two conforming lots. We show the houses that are going to be built down this lot for the board's benefit. We have absolutely no variance as everything is conforming. And before these just structures and property are taken down and the driveways are going to be realigned, so they're going to be taken out as well. And they'll be coxed on the seater in those areas. The only thing that you see on the plans is we have an easement. What we're showing is lot 7002. And that's because when I checked with the DPW, there is no sewer or water in front of us on Papsco Drive. So we're going to put a private easement to get to the sewer and water that's on Deerfield. Other than that, that's it. I don't want to eat at that horse.
Okay, please, any members of our professional group have any questions or comments?
No, it's a fully conforming application. Besides the correction on the architecturals, I have nothing to add.
Well, it looks like there's a few easements that they're looking for. Or, sorry, easement isn't the right word.
There's a minimus exception for parking.
Okay.
But it does meet Parsippany's parking ordinance.
Yes, it doesn't meet the RSIS.
Correct.
But it does comply with Parsippany's requirement.
Okay. Any of our other professionals?
Yeah, just, I'm sure Ms. Eve Mio is planning on doing this, but this lot plan is subject to review by the township engineer, lot grading plan, drainage plan, soil and sediment road control plan, soil movement plan. And then I'm not shown on here, nor does it have to be shown, is just confirmation that you will follow the minor drainage requirements for the drywells?
Yes. Yes, when we come in with the architectural plans, grading plans, we'll have drywells on them. Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Any members of the board have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, two question, yeah. Just from my understanding, are there any trees or anything that will be taken down?
Yes, if you look at the plan, you see some Xs through some trees where driveways and walkways are. There's one, two, three of them that have to come down.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
And possibly a fourth where we have the easement for the water and sanitary. I'm hoping you can certify that tree. We won't know that until we do it in the field and lay it out exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this application? All right.
And you've had a chance to review the board planner and the board engineers' reports, as well as all the departmental reports?
Yes, I have no problem with that.
And you'll accept all the recommendations?
Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments from the board, I'll turn it back over to you for any final comments.
Yeah, the only thing I'll mention to the board, I don't know if we've gotten it or not in the letter yet. We had submitted soil erosion. Soil erosion came back with some little things that they wanted. We've already made those changes when we submitted. We haven't gotten confirmation yet, but I'm sure we'll satisfy.
As long as you continue to comply with the requests, I'm sure there won't be any concerns. Okay. And does that close out your?
I mean, it's a very straightforward application.
Okay. I'll go ahead and accept a motion from one of our board members on this.
Do you want to open the floor to the public?
Thank you for the, thank you for that. Yes, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this application? All right, hearing, seeing none, I will open it up to the board for a... Yes, sorry.
You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Jenny Heerly.
Motion?
Yes, thank you.
A motion to approve application number 22:535, DGN 94, Papsco Drive, block 353, lot seven, zone R4, minor subdivision.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second, Didich.
All right. Do any of the boards wish to comment on the motion? All good? All right, we'll go ahead and, all right, we'll take a vote then. Nora?
Didich?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes. All right, thank you very much for your patience tonight. I apologize for that, but.
Thank you, that's why I like you back to Parsippany. You guys like me.
All right, well, good luck on your project.
Thank you.
And then, spare.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned then.
Three at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. If we could stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich?
Yeah.
Councilman DiPiero?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Napolitano? Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Von Aiken?
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Here.
We have our board planner, Ms. Winters, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Stein.
All right, we have a meeting that is open to the general public. Is there any member of the public here who wishes to speak to this board on something that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. We have some correspondence in our packet tonight from Mark Semararo of Semararo &amp; Farni LLC, requesting a one-year extension of resolution of approval of application 21:510, Globe Logistics, 939 Edwards Road, block 767, lot 31. Nora, do you have any comments on that? Or do our professionals have any?
So, as you'll remember last meeting, this applicant was before the board for a soil moving permit. They had been held up because of they were seeking NJDEP approvals. And so they're asking for a one-year extension of their prior site plan approval until October 18th of 2024.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we've granted that. Next, we have two resolutions. We've got 21:506, Ahmad Lawandi, 56 Upper Rainbow Trail, block 117, lots 27, 28, minor subdivision with C variance. Do I have? Looks like we're pretty much in alignment here as to everybody voting on that, so. Yes, Mr. Didich?
Yeah, I move the motion to approve resolution for application number 21:506, Ahmad Lawandi, 56 Upper Rainbow Trail, block 117, lots 27 and 28, minor subdivision with C variance.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mealy.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt? Matt Upset, forgot. Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right. Then we have 23:524, Globe Logistics. Do I have somebody to move the major soil moving permit for that one?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mealy?
A motion to approve the resolution for application number 23:524, Globe Logistics Incorporated, 939 Edwards Road, lot 767, lot 31, major soil moving permit.
Do I have a second?
Second, Didich.
Thank you, Mr. Didich. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right. Moves to the next item on the mat, on our calendar, is the calendar. As you can see, there is a calendar that is included in your package. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at it? I know it's a little early. It's early October at this point. We don't always know what we're doing next year at this point. Does anybody have any particular date that stands out to them that they really would not be able to be here?
Haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but Nora, I assume somebody's checked at all the holidays, everybody's holidays?
I went through all the holidays.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion approving the adoption of this calendar?
I'll make the motion.
I have a second.
Didich.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right, so that's our calendar for next year. If anybody does have any constraints or anything, let us know now because we still have time to adjust it if absolutely necessary. Okay, we have two cases on our agenda tonight. We have actually a bunch of master plan consistency reviews, but let's go with application 23:522, Raffinello Group, 1915 Route 46, blocks 454, lot two, minor site plan with C variance for parking and signage.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Howard Lipstein. I'm the attorney for the applicant at Raffinello Group LLC. I'm here tonight with the application for 1915 Route 46, also known as block 454, block 200. The property in question presently is approximately $47,000, 83, 239 square feet. It contains an existing office with associated parking. It's currently a two-story office building. It is $12,213 square feet, and we have 61 parking spaces, which is currently occupied by a property with 45 employees. Our proposal is an expansion to the existing parking area with new underground stormwater management system, create 14 more additional spaces, making a total of 75 spaces. Seeking approval of minor site plan, C variances, particularly the monument sign. As the ordinance requires, a 15-foot setback. We are seeking a 5-foot setback from the front property line. We can borrow it to a minimum 25-foot landscape green area setback existing right now with zero setback from the front property line. Proposing actually a 1-foot setback from the front property line. With respect to off-street parking, the ordinance provides that off-street parking will be located only in the side and rear yards, provided not closer to 5 feet to the side of the rear. The existing parking is 6.8 feet on the front and 3.7 feet on the side. We're proposing a 1-foot front and 1-foot side. And if you're up to, the ordinance also provides no off-street parking where loading areas shall be located within required buffer area or landscape green area. Currently, there's a 6.8-foot setback from the front property line. We're proposing 1-foot setback from the front parking, property line. The ordinance also provides that there should be no off-street parking areas with less than 100 spaces shall contain contact for parking spaces. We are asking for approval for some compact spaces provided. And lastly, there's a generator on property, and we're asking that it be within 5 feet of the property. And that's essentially what our request is. And we do have an expert to testify.
Well, before we move on to that, we've got some waivers that we need to ask for. I'm going to turn to our planner, and Ms. Winters is going to.
All right, so there are a couple of waivers. The first is for the floor plans for the existing building, and we have no objection to that. Existing and proposed site illumination. The asset testimony to be provided about any proposed changes to lighting and that it's adequate for the new parking area. The location description of existing and proposed landscaping. And for the environmental assessment report, we ask that testimony be provided in relation to that. That's all.
All right, do I have a motion approving the waivers in the ARH document of September 14th, 2023?
So moved, Von Aiken.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll?
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yep. Okay, counselor?
Yes, we would like to call Mr. Adam Kendup as our expert engineer.
Hi, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, and please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board some background on your experience in licensing.
Yes, my name is Adam Kendil. Last name is K.K. Kend. K.I.L. I'm a civil engineer. I have 20 years of experience. I'm licensed in New Jersey, and I've testified in this board and other boards in Moorestown, Sussex, Essex, and Somerset.
Kendil, you've had enough to explain in detail these provisions that we've requested. Could you put some explanation?
Yes, sir. First off, should I turn the board to the audience or do you have it shown now?
I think we of the board do need to see it regardless.
Sorry, I'll turn it.
You can move the other board if that helps. That's for later.
Is that okay? You're here. Okay. So I think Howard went through most of my testimony. Does everyone hear me off the mic?
You have to.
No, we need the mic for the recordings.
Can I pick it up from the mic?
Yes.
I think Howard went through a lot of my testimony. There's three main components that we're proposing. So first, where the project is located. It's located at 1915 Route 46. It's actually on the eastbound side of Route 46 as you approach the Smith Road ring on 46 East. Immediately to the west across Littleton Road is the BP gas station. And to the east beyond Smith Road ramp is the old servo lumber center. In the rear was the old Parsippany Dental. And across the street is the Jersey City Reservoir. Just for where it's situated. So the site, as Howard was saying, is 1.094 acres. There's an existing site there. We're not here regarding the uses of the site. We're here for three components, which is the additional parking that the applicant is looking as a potential buffer because the more recent tenants that they had, they do have certain peak time hours where they have group sessions. So it's an outpatient medical therapy thing establishment. It's called New Chapter. It's a faith-based medical outpatient where there's rehab there, and there's also group sessions and therapy as well. That was the most recent application. But we're not here for that application just in an attempt to get ahead of it. The applicant is looking for potential coinciding peaks that may occur with that new use, as well as the existing JRS transportation that's currently in the building there. So I do have a list of the tenants that are there. And we appreciate you granting the waiver on the report, but we will go through the tenants that are there. So the tenants that are currently occupying the space, the suite 101, it is New Chapter, which they're taking for bulk of almost half of the building at 58. So the overall building size is 12,213 square feet. And they're taking, they're taking 5,830 square feet. And not by ordinance, but when they do have group sessions, the applicant has come to determination that they sometimes would need up to 30 spots for that one, for that one tenant. And also JRS transportation, they need 25 spots. There's also instances when school's not in session. They're either parked there, the buses, and then the drivers come the next day. But the buses are, so they're not full-size buses, but minibus, minivans that are used for transportation. But if school's not in session, they may be parked there or on a night or on a weekend as well, which coincides with, you know, a lot of times when there's these group sessions. So there might be independent sessions for New Chapter where they're going for one-on-one. But when they have the group sessions, more often than not, they're at night and also on weekends and also around the holidays too, when people are off. So that, they, JRS transportation, although it's a thousand square feet, there's anticipation of about 25 parking spots for the minibus and transportation vehicles that are at. Also, Eastern Janitorial, which is owner occupied. That is Nick runs that operation, and he's been there for, been there for about two years. And it's about 3,933 square feet, and they would occupy about 10 spaces. And Polo Rojas, which is 350 studios, that, 350 square feet, and they anticipate one spot just for that, that one user. Moore Transportation, 700 square feet, and three parking spots. And then EG Technology, 400 square feet and two parking spots. So that yields around 71 anticipated at a peak, at a coinciding peak. So here we are, we are offering 75 to get ahead of that and to make sure there's adequate and ample. We have other establishments in other areas that if there isn't inadequate parking, they do have, they'll have your parking maybe on the street or something like that, where this being with Frontage on Route 46, you know, the owner of the building wants to make sure there's adequate off-site parking there. As Howard said, currently, there are 61 spaces. So this is where the site's located. So again, the three main components that we're presenting and requesting relief is the parking, the monument sign, which the applicant is looking to put along 46, which I'll show as we get there. And also, the third component is there's an existing generator that was provided by the electrician. Initially, you may not see it on the initial paperwork because they were going to do it, bifurcate it, put in two different applications. But we spoke about it. We said, since we're coming in front of the board, let's put it all on one application, which we did. And I sent, we had a letter sent to Nora explaining that. But those are the three main components that we, the applicant is proposing and that we are coming in front of this board for. We're not coming for the actual use itself or for the tenants, but for these three components. Here's the existing conditions. I'm just going to walk the board through and any of the neighbors who are interested, just let me know. So here's Route 46 on the front of the property, which the property currently fronts. And in the rear, there is a slither by Littleton Road. And then you have the old Parsipony Dental site back over here. And the BP gas station is adjacent on the west side. And the ramp for Smith Road is along here. This is, right now, there's currently two parking spots right as you come in here. And then these were previously approved prior to our applicant occupying the space. There's two spots right immediately as you come in. So essentially, what the applicant is doing, we're going to just reconfigure some of the striping because they don't need as much striping by the dumpster here. And they will gain one spot just in reconfiguring the striping here. Then, in this area here, they're going to lose these two spots that are here. But they would create, carve out this front yard area to obtain the 13 parking spots that they're looking to get here. So that would be 13 plus the one. And in the sense they do need the parking, what we tried to do, and because it is a little tight in that area and we're closer to Route 46, in an attempt to mitigate it a little bit, we're proposing compact parking spots, which would be. So I'm going to now turn to the proposed condition. And I'm going to leave this here also to review at the same time. So again, as I was saying, as you come in here, you'd be carving out these spots over here to obtain 13 parking spots. And then reconfiguring down here to go from 15 to 16 parking spots. And two things that we're looking to mitigate is to put the employee parking here, which are compact spaces, which are 16 by eight and a half. The ordinance does give guidance on parking spaces, but it's for bigger sites when there's 100 or more vehicles. We are using the same guidance, but we understand that here we don't have as many spots. But we're using the same guidance that's given in the ordinance to provide these six spots over here. And also, to mitigate the stormwater, we're providing two underground stormwater detention tanks. Immediately under, we are proposing. tanks immediately under, we are proposing open grate, but we can make it, we can make it as per Andrew's recommendation. I will make it closed grate and we will do the overflow coming from the roof clear. But we definitely acknowledge that and we will update that. And the sign, proposed sign here is right here in the front where it is visible on Route 46. It's almost an identification sign, really. I mean, it's just giving, you know, it's giving just the property address so that the property can be identified. And it's right immediately in the front. We're not asking for a variance for the size of the sign or the height, but just for the location that, that's the only area that it can be put, and that's going to be closer to Route 46 over there. So the variance that we're requesting is rather than 15 feet from the property line, we're proposing it at five feet from the property line. Again, we can, I don't know if I should go through the professionals' comments now, but I just want to go over a brief overview. The property currently, it currently drains from west to east currently, right now. So we're going to be maintaining existing drainage patterns. Again, talking about the brook, the brook is here and top of the bank is here. The edge of the building is 150 feet to the edge of the building. So when it comes to riparian zones and so on, we're beyond that. It's not a category one stream nor drought-producing, and there's no immediate threat and danger species that are apparent to us. So we anticipate that from a riparian zone that we might, that we're beyond any limits and we're in an area of maintained lawn. So even from the DP's eyes, if it was a preserved area, it would not be a maintained lawn that's considered disturbed. So it's an area that's previously disturbed lawn area. So those are the three components that we're presenting. I did speak to Andrew and there was some discussion and, you know, I got the letter today and there was some discussion about the flood plain and so on. So if there is, we could probably get into that in the comments, but if there is a...
If you can comment on it, from the flood map, it appears the whole site all the way up to where you propose the parking is within the flood plain. There are requirements for parking restrictions in flood plains. So I just want your comments on it.
Yeah, certainly. So yeah, there are permits that we can obtain. We're coming in front of the board to see from a zoning aspect. We did not anticipate, I mean, we didn't anticipate that there would be requirements from the flood plain. We thought more or less for the building and the building was out. But if indeed there are requirements, we would adhere to it and request necessary permit from the DP. We would definitely propose it to be a zero net fill if possible. And that would be the idea, even if we had to add another inlet and bring that inlet into the dry well to keep it a zero net fill, that's what we would do. Just in case the water's trapped and not come down, then we would probably add an inlet and bring it into the dry well if that works.
Okay, just continue what you're testifying. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think for the most part, unless there's any questions, I think I'm, I think I'm done with the testimony. I think Howard went through most of them. I think, I don't know if we should go through the review letters and then we can go point by point on the, on the open items or if we should skip to the items that are not.
I like going through review letters.
You do like going through.
So give us your best.
Okay. Should, should we start with the planning review letter?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'm going, I'm looking at the September 14, 2013 review letter. So should I skip to the items that require testimony?
Yeah. As far as the waivers, wanted testimony on the lighting. I don't know if you'll be doing the environmental assessment testimony or if someone else will.
So with regards to, so with regards to the lighting, so currently there's existing lighting throughout the site. There's also a building mounted sign on the front area of the lawn that actually illuminates the yard there. And it's, I went there at night and drove there and it appears adequate that it covers this area. So we were not proposing any additional lighting beyond that. Whatever spillage that may be there today will continue to be there. We're not making any adjustments or modifications to the lights there. So that was the request for the waiver.
Thank you. Any lighting on the sign?
The sign...
Is it internally lit or?
The sign, there will be spots of floodlights pointing at it just for it to be visible.
Thank you.
With regards to the environmental impact, we were requesting a waiver in that, and I tried addressing it in my, my site development letter that I submitted stating that the areas that are being disturbed were previously disturbed areas, including the maintained lawn, and that we were mitigating from a stormwater standpoint. So if there was any additional runoff that was being generated, then we were going to capture it in the underground detention system. So that was the request for the, for the, for the environmental impact statement under a minor site.
Thank you.
So that's for the site lighting, environments with impact. So with regards, so I guess jumping to the variances?
Sure.
Is that okay or? So jumping to the variances that we have on page five of the report. Or let's start on page four, just talking about, there's a pre-existing nonperformance of the, of the minimum lot width. So as it is today, the lot remains to be 120 feet. We're not making any changes to the lot. It's an existing condition and it will remain like that as a result of the proposal. Additionally, for the minimum side yard setback of the principal building, we're currently witnessing a 12-foot side yard setback, and that also will remain today. So that's an existing nonperformance. And then with regards to the variances, so the maximum parking spaces as per ordinance is 49. As, as I went through previously in the testimony and also in conversations with the applicant, talking about the parking demands, it yields around 71 and the applicant's best judgment based off of what they understand of the tenants that they have. Hence the reason why we are looking to propose 75 to have just a slight buffer above that. The next variance is the minimum parking dimensions. Standard parking dimensions as per the ordinance are nine by 18. We are proposing eight and a half by 16 compact spaces, which are the six employee parking spaces along the frontage of Route 46. That guidance came from the ordinance of the size of the spaces, although we don't meet the condition of how many parking spots we have in, in the parking lot. The location of the parking is to be restricted to both the rear and side yard. I'll leave it for the planner to discuss that. We do have parking in the front yard. It mimics the corridor. I mean, if you look immediately adjacent to the site, there's also at the BP gas station, there's pavement right up along on the, on the Route 46 corridor. And it is in kind with its surroundings, but I'll leave that for the planning testimony to wrap it up. The minimum side setback of five, five feet. Minimum side setback of five feet and we're providing one foot. We discussed that. And also with the generator, just to break to the board's attention, and I think you'll see it in some of the photos that were presented. So the generator is right here to the right side of the building. It's tucked away between the existing building and between a fence of the neighbors, the neighboring fence. So even at the height of the generator, almost standing like this, that's compared to, to the, to this area up here, it's essentially visually screened from the neighbor. So in the intent of where it is, it's screened between the building and from the side fence, but we are acknowledging that variance and that's why I was, I was for that variance. The building, the minimum building setback of five, and I think that, I think that's the accessory structure or?
Um...
This is the fair to the bottom of the middle section. Right, is that for the accessory structure?
Building setback?
Yeah.
That's for the parking.
For the parking, okay. Yeah, and even in the parking, I think our tightest area of existing parking is probably in this area, it's about 3.7 feet currently, but we are exuberating that by going one foot up to, you know, the sideline where the fence is there. Parking in the buffer and green area, not permitted. We're proposing parking in the, in the front yard, which is, we're asking for relief from that variance. And last but not least, and the minimum landscape green area, again, very similar, a 25-foot required from the front and we're proposing one at that area. And then last but not least is the minimum setback for the sign as discussed, it's 15 feet and we're proposing five foot away from the front property.
Do you have any comments or further questions?
Would you be able to do any screening on the generator in the front of it? I know you said it's screened from the side, but...
I mean, there's access from both sides over there. I think, I think certainly, I think we could, I think we can certainly screen that from the front and if I have the board open out to maintain access to there, that's something that we can certainly do after the rest of the time.
That's all I have right now.
Okay. Any other questions about the planner's report? And we're going to still go through the engineer's report.
And you'll agree to the post-approval considerations that the planner listed in her report?
Yes, sir.
All right, shall we go through the engineer's report before we start asking questions?
Yeah, I can continue. I'm going to continue going through the engineer's report. So I'm looking at the engineer's report, D P I, December 29.
Do you have the October 2nd one?
It was issued today.
I'm sorry, September, I'm sorry, yes, September 20. I'm looking at the wrong date. Good.
So are you going to jump over the variance section because I think that was taken care of in the, in the standards? Was there any of that in this? I think so, right?
No, not from my, my letter.
Okay.
You can go right into engineering comments on page two.
Okay. So engineering comments on page two. Number one, property survey should be provided. I thought we submitted one and if we didn't, we definitely reset a certified copy of the survey and we'll distribute it. The cover sheet, we will add a north arrow going back to the cover sheet, just for sake of the board and the engineer. The top of the sheet is north on this, just for reference, but we're going to definitely add it on the, as a condition, I'll work with Andrew and we'll take care of that. We'll add a north arrow to that. Now with regards to number three, so we, again, being that the three components that we were coming in with, we didn't anticipate that we were making any modifications to the access point or intensities or anything like that. So we were specifically maintaining that access. So we were hoping that, not hoping, we, we anticipate in accordance with the, in accordance with the NJ DOT State Highway Management Code, Section 16, colon, 47, dash, 8.1, we thought that we were not, but...
Just our policy is, it very well may be of no interest to them, but go through, follow the steps to either obtain the letter of no interest, choose a very easy process, you give them your information and they respond. So we'll ask that to be a condition.
Certainly, and that's what I had here. I said we would, if required, we will certainly obtain an eligible. Regarding the flood hazard area, I was speaking about it earlier. So we were anticipating since we, we understand there is a flood plain there, we were going to design, so we're essentially going to replace the lawn in kind and we were going to put some asphalt at the same elevation, so no net fill there.
My comment, just asking if you agreed to comply with the BEP flood hazard area rules as regards to conversion from the grass to parking, and there are requirements for parking stalls in a flood hazard, as long as you agree or the conditions to meet the rules, that's fine.
We are willing to comply with any D U P regulations on that. Number five, so...
That's a minor note, that's...
And we will, we'll update on our updated plans for final submission. If there was any other conditions, we'll certainly add and expand the table to add the accessory structures. Number six, regarding the 75 parking spots, I went through the testimony earlier, if that was okay. Number eight, regarding spot elevations, so I will, as we progress the construction drawings, I will certainly add more detail with regards to the stormwater, the overflow and also the spot shots elevations.
Just want to go back to comment seven, E V. As I read the regulations, you would, for the new proposed parking, you'd be required to meet the requirement?
Two?
Yeah, it's 15% of the proposal. But you agreed to provide the required E V?
Yeah, I actually spoke to the applicant prior to this and he agreed and he's willing to comply.
Okay.
Does it come out to two?
I didn't do the math.
Okay.
Actually, just have a question. Would the E V spots, Andrew, have to be in the new area or would it be able to be placed anywhere?
I don't know that it speaks to that. You're a good question.
Just, just wondering.
I think it's silent on that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's...
Okay.
We still have more questions.
I think the applicant, I was just talking offline here, he'd probably propose in the new area, since we'll be disturbing that area anyways since we're on grid.
Yes, but I'm just trying to build institutional knowledge here. What's the question?
It would be two spots required.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're willing to comply with that. Just like, is there any variance required for accessory structure?
No, I wouldn't create any variance.
For the final, the spot elevations and now number nine, regarding the constructability, yes, we're right up against property line. So we would provide detail or at least advise the contractor to shore right up to the property line in building that curve. It'd be 18 inches down, but shore right up to the property line and, and, you know, we can also detail on our drawings not to go over the property line.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Certainly, uh, number, uh, number 10. So previously, on the previously approved plans, this was the van location, so we maintained it. If, to achieve that, we would be okay to maybe switch that van accessible closer to the dumpster one? So the dumpster one now is showing, um, it's showing eight, eight and five. So we'd show an eight and eight, if we can utilize the exemption for that to keep it eight and eight, rather than an 11 and five, if that would be...
As long as it complies, and you, you have your, you know, ability to rework where you haven't located it. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Certainly, yeah, that was the location of the existing, so we maintained it there. But we will, we will relocate it too. So just for the sake of work, rather than it being here, we'll flip it to the other side and then expand the five-foot access to make an eight-foot access. Over 11, uh, we will comply. Yeah, we'll, I'll add a stop sign, probably keep it right outside the right of way. And we'll put a stop sign there, and we'll put a, a striping right outside of that, on the right of way. So we will comply with that. Um, with regards to the drywall, as discussed earlier, we'll comply with that. The overflow, rather than having a grate on the top, we'll have the overflow from the downspout. Uh, with regards to pavement, also we'll comply with regards to the sidewalk. So that, um, I, I spoke to the applicant, and if needed, we could put a sidewalk. I just don't, we'd have to see the ramifications. We don't wanna commit to it because it is along Route 46 right of way. The ramifications of us going in the right of way, as it may be interrupted if we put a portion of sidewalk. But continuing it through the right of way, we don't wanna commit to it, it's gonna open up a DOT application.
That was just drawn in there for the board's consideration. The question, the, the comment is applicant should consider installation of sidewalk along Route 46 frontage. And I, I don't know if, what the board feels about it.
I can tell you the issue of why people are thinking that, because the owner himself is on street view, walking from Dunkin' Donuts to a site. He's the only one who knows.
Miss Bell.
I was on street view looking at it, and I see, and I was like, is that you, Nick? Um, but, I mean, we're, we're open to it, we, um, we would, we, it, it, if it, if it's gonna open up another perk for DOT, DOT is very backed up. And there's, uh, there is certainly a demand that he would like to execute the project as soon as possible. If it's something that can be considered at a later date, he would prefer to do that. But he's not, he, he's amenable to it if it's on.
This board is committed to trying to improve access along there, but...
Certainly.
We'll have that discussion.
Okay. And just, Andrew, just a quick question. So if we did do that going into the right of way, would, would that be...
Uh, that should not be an issue with DOT and access, that's an HOP, Highway Occupancy Permit, that's, that's a simpler process. So the idea of adding the sidewalk should not affect, or will not affect, you getting a letter of no interest on, uh, for the parking. It's related to the lot, the letter of no interest is related to the lot size and number of trips.
Certainly, yeah, which I did do the trip count and...
Lot frontage and all those things, they all play in. So, again, it should be easy to submit that, and you'll get a determination if it's no interest, or if you have a minor access permit, or whatever. But we do ask for you to go, and go through the process.
We would, I, I meant for the, for the sidewalk, if that's a, if that's another application that DOT would have to review, or is that under the jurisdiction?
It's typically under the, it's under the jurisdiction of the DOT, but it's during construction.
Okay, okay. That, that works for us, Greg, Greg?
And the last item was if you can revise the plan set to include a soil and semi-control plan. I realize that you, under the threshold for needing to go to Soil Conservation District, but for constructability, it is a good idea to give the details and requirements during construction to the contract.
And, and either we'll do either hay bales on the existing asphalt, or just soap fence right away. It does soap this way, so we may consider putting hay bales on...
Follow the, the standards for Service of Soil Conservation District.
Will do.
I, I just wanted to go back to the, uh, drywell. Again, I wanted the lid on there, it is not, even though you're below the threshold for, um, major development and stormwater management, it's not good practice to have surface runoff from the parking lot directly into the drywell for clogging. So that's why I want that. So if you do have to add any inlets with regards to the flood hazard area, which I don't think you do need to, be conscious, we don't want to have a unfiltered, a direct connection from the new pavement to the drywell. We want that to be maintained for the roof area.
To the clean water.
Yeah, to clean water for the roof.
Certainly.
That's, that's all I have.
Any questions by members of the board on this testimony?
I have him.
Mr. Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for your testimony. Uh, just a couple for sequel, maybe you know this, maybe you don't. Are the parking spots for the buses reserved for buses only back there?
Um, I, it didn't appear that there was signs or anything for reserve only. I drove by, tonight was probably about nine, nine to 10 that were there tonight. Uh, but depending on the influx, there's more or less.
Okay, can, can you get to Route 46 from exiting this, or you have to go onto the, um, Smith Road there?
Um, you can, the only ingress, um, point is from Route 46.
But you can, you, I'm saying, when you were leaving this site, can you jump on Route 46? Or you have to go on, can you make that jump across the highway there?
There's striping, there's striping.
Okay, all right.
The individual would have to go on to Smith Road.
Okay, and do the 17 U-turns, yep.
Yeah, almost.
Yeah. Go next town and come back, yeah.
I'm sure somebody will try it, though.
Right. Um, no way is the brook being disturbed back there, correct?
No.
And then where, if these two drywells you're, you're putting in, where, where is that water draining to?
So it's gonna be fully obtained.
Okay. And there, looks like there's, um, next to the flagpole, and one of these pictures shows some electrical lighting that, that's there. You have it on this one here?
Yeah.
Are those being removed? Is there wiring underground, is that on?
So those are essentially lighting the flagpole.
Okay.
So, um, wasn't the preferred option, but either the flagpole, if you relocate or remove completely, and then similar to that, there would be light shining on the new sign.
Okay, so those, those...
Similar exactly like those.
Those lines can't hold the, uh, the EV lines, is what you're saying?
Um, I, I...
Probably not.
Not my expertise.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions of this testimony?
Who else is gonna speak?
Uh, our planner, Matthew Flynn, is, uh, speaking.
Cause my questions are, you're removing all this nice green grass over here. Somebody gonna testify regarding landscaping or something to beautify it a little bit?
Um, so I, I would certainly, at the request of the board, if, if, to add landscaping, if that's a requirement, we will certainly add landscaping to our plans, and we can present a landscape plan for the professionals to review if that, if that's acceptable.
I would like to say something regarding, yeah, some, some type of landscaping, the blacktop and all that grass.
Sure.
So what are you gonna do to maintain the, the aesthetics of the property?
Yeah, so, uh, so as of today, there's no landscaping there currently. Uh, we would just be conscious of any site triangles that are there.
Well, you have, you have all this grass that you're gonna make a parking lot. So my question is, is that's, there's no more green?
So I would be certainly open to providing some shrubbery along the backside of the, of this parking area.
Low growing, yeah.
Low growing shrubbery and grass cover, if that's acceptable to the board.
I would like to see something like that, not on the rest of the board.
That was actually gonna be a suggestion of mine, also just because you have headlights potentially going out to the highway. So something of an evergreen that would shade, shade the headlights.
Makes, makes sense, I would, I, um, I think we would certainly be open to do that. I think it would be more aesthetically pleasing, and it would serve two purposes, and also block the headlights.
I'm assuming, then, you would have a consultation with our forester or something like that to make sure?
Yeah, I can, I can speak with Parks and Racks, and I can also, uh, with Forestry, and also with Christine as well, Ken or Andrew.
The, the Forestry is, is probably the best.
Certainly, will do.
All right.
And whatever recommendations we make, we're, we're willing to satisfy their, um, their requests.
And just add a little bit of green and a tiny bit of buffering.
Certainly.
So, all right. Any other questions by members of the board on this testimony, Mr. DeDich?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good question. So I just heard that the, there is no reserved parking for the school buses, right? So would the buses fit into this revised 8 and 1/2 by 16?
So those certainly would not be for buses. Where they usually park today are in the backside of the property. So where they park today, and then these would be more or less passenger vehicles. The idea, um, so it's a great question, the idea in general here would be that maybe more of the long-term, not long-term, but staying for the day, office workers would park in this area and leave this more free for the, um, for the individuals who are coming for the group. And for the therapy sessions and stuff like that. So those people would have adequate parking on a daily basis.
Okay, so in current state, there is an understanding between the tenants and the drivers that, hey, school buses just go in the back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just... Could you just, just from my own enlightenment, point out where the main entrance, where people coming from the parking lot would go into the building?
Uh, so currently, the main entrance is, is currently right here, is the main entrance. There is a side door entrance here, another entrance here, and it is ADA compliant. And, and so this is really the main entrance.
Okay, that sounds like the ADA compliant space that you're proposing is closest to the door. WDA and ADA compliant door.
Yeah, yeah, on both sides.
Okay. Any other members have any questions? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Yes, we want Mr. Matthew Flynn to testify on his own claim, please.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with background on your experience.
Sure, Matthew Flynn, F-L-Y-N-N. I'm employed by John McDonough Associates, located at 101 Gibraltar Drive in Morris Plains, New Jersey. Um, I testified before this board, as well as about 100 other boards across the state of New Jersey. My education comes from Rutgers, I have my master's degree in planning and public policy. I have my professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as my AICP license, which is the National License Office for Planners.
Thank you.
Any questions on this hearing and seeing none?
So with the board's permission, I do have an exhibit to pass around and just give, give some additional context of the, of the property and the surrounding area. What exhibit number are we at?
This will just be A1.
A1, okay. So just for the record, exhibit A1 is a three-page exhibit consisting of some photographs taken by my office on earlier today. Could you guys share?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have a couple extras that I can fill in some of the gaps, yeah? Does anyone want their own? I have a couple more. Uh, as I stated, exhibit A1 is a three-page exhibit, um, consisting of some photographs taken by my office. And really, the main reason I wanted to point this out to the board was, and I'll just start with the first page here. Um, we see our property right in the center of the page. We see that we are not directly on Route 46, we are sort of, we're on that Smith Road exit. Technically, we are in the Route 46 right of way. Um, but just speaking to the fact that we do need some setback relief, namely in terms of the signage relief, uh, even though we are only five feet from the front property line, whereas we need 15 feet, that, that exit width gives us, I would say, substantial separation between our property and Route 46. So to the extent that requirements like that are to preserve streetscape aesthetics, I would say that intent is, is mitigated by, by that, by that feature. I wanted to point out from the outset that we're not here necessarily to request a variance for removing too much grass or removing too much impervious coverage. Um, because the impervious coverage actually as a whole does comply, 75% is allowed. We are within that requirement. Uh, really, we're not here for too much impervious or too much parking. Uh, we're really here for the location of our parking, uh, both in terms of the fact that we have parking in the front yard and some setbacks relative to that parking, and some landscaping that's required around that parking. Uh, so really, it's not the parking itself or the amount of parking, it's really the location on the property that, that's causing these variances. Uh, again, we are in the O1 office professional zone, and we're talking about an additional approximately 2,500 square feet of, of parking area. So I'll just list some of the variances, or all of the variances quickly, um, I know that we've been through them already. Um, maximum number of parking spaces, we're proposing 75 spaces, and we're allowed up to 49 spaces. Again, parking location in the front yard, it's required to be in the rear or, or the side. Um, parking side setback, we're proposing one foot, we are required to have five feet. Um, the setback between the building and parking, we're proposing four feet, and we're required five feet. Um, parking in the required buffer slash green area, a landscaped green area of 25 feet is required, we're proposing one feet. It's actually an improvement over the zero feet that's out there today. Um, and then again, that signage setback of five feet, whereas we need 15 feet. Also, parking space dimensions for the compact spaces. Uh, we're really only allowed to have compact spaces if we have 100 off-street parking spaces. Uh, in this case, the dimensions actually comply, but we don't have 100 off-street parking spaces, so we don't meet that threshold. And the number of compact car spaces shall not exceed 25% of the total number of spaces otherwise required. Uh, so those are all the C, C variances. Now, coming back to this exhibit quickly, on this page one here, we see to the left, there's some land that's actually owned by the DOT. It's actually maintained, and it's been historically maintained by this property owner. Uh, so we see that we do have, in terms of aesthetics and, and green area, we do have a nice, uh, I'll, I'll call it a buffer to the left there, that provides that area that's unlikely to be developed in the future. So, um, in terms of having green area around us and light air, open space, I think that, that we have that nice built-in buffer there. Um, flipping over to sheet two, we can see that to the extent that we are requesting some parking setbacks, um, variances. Again, we see the nice buffering and mature vegetation on that DOT land. We also see on the other side of Route 46 that we really have no neighbor across the street there. Um, there is that reservoir there. So this is sort of a unique, remote location where the impact of these variances is, is mitigated by all these features. And also on sheet two, I could point out again, the width of that actual exit lane, or two lanes of, um, that exit that provide further separation from the highway itself. Uh, finally, just flipping to the last page, sheet three here, we, again, to get a sense of that sort of buffering in the back of the property. Uh, again, we're not here requesting a coverage variance or having too much parking. And again, this is an area that is adequately buffered, it's, it's sort of in a remote location, and it will not stand out today or, or as a result of this application as being excessively developed or excessively paved. or as a result of this application as being excessively developed or excessively paved. So having said all that, to go through the statutory criteria for all of those variances that I just listed, they're all justified by the C2 balancing test, were by the benefits of the application as a whole, substantially outweigh any detriment. Here, what we're proposing is for the better accommodation of permitted uses on the property. I think there's about six uses on this property today. So to anticipate what all these uses need is certainly not the easiest thing. And this applicant is proposing a sort of buffer parking area for the anticipated growth of the existing uses here, specifically that group therapy session. So we're not expecting this parking lot to be full 100% of the time. Again, it's that buffer for when we do have those group therapy sessions. Again, taking advantage of a portion of the property that's not currently utilized, not going over in terms of coverage or the like, not requesting any bulk variances per se. And to that extent, I would say that all of that promotes purposes of the municipal land use law, including Purpose A, promotion of general welfare; Purpose G, variety of uses in appropriate locations; Purpose I, desirable visual environment; and Purpose N, efficient use of land. The flip side to that is the negative criteria. I don't believe there will be any substantial detriment to the public or to the zone plan. No exterior alterations are being made to the building. We're sorry about the stormwater management system proposed to fully detain all of the increased runoff. Again, impervious coverage is compliant. And I think I spoke to the impact from a visual and aesthetic standpoint and how this is a pretty remote location that will not have any adverse impacts on any of our neighbors. Really, we only have one commercial neighbor here. And as our engineer pointed out, if you look on Sheet 2 of the exhibit I just handed out, having pavement up to the front property line is certainly not unique to our property, so we're not going to stand out in that regard either. When we take the property into account as a whole, again, it certainly does not constitute overdevelopment or excessive pavement. And all of that being said, again, I think that all of the C variances requested can be justified by that C2 balancing test. None of the potential impacts rise to the level of being substantial. And I would say that this is certainly a net positive application, where the benefits certainly outweighed the detriments. So with that, I'll alter myself off the table.
All right. I have a comment.
Mr. De Piero.
Your reference to all the greenery owned by the state that your client maintains, I guess was in response to me looking for greenery. There is a certain thing called street appeal. I assume you're familiar with that, okay? People on Route 46, which is the main thoroughfare there, will be in the street. And they won't see this little parking area, this green area you're talking about. But they will see a few low-grown shrubs along the front.
Right, I'm not, I mean, to take away from the suggestion that we made.
Okay.
That's certainly still on the table. I was just pointing out that this is sort of a nice location for the proposal.
Okay.
Other members of the board have questions or comments with this testimony at this time? Do you have any?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Are other professionals?
No, I'm good.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions to this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Yes. We do not have any further testimonials. And the board is considering the request.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition of this case or this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Any in favor of this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Do I have a motion that somebody wishes to make, or do I have a discussion that we wish to have?
Can I make a comment?
Sure, certainly.
I think the applicant has been very amenable to all of our suggestions. So I like what we're hearing, and he's going to work with the forester, and he's going to talk to the engineering department as well. So I'll be voting in favor of this application.
All right. Is that a motion?
Oh, sure, I'll make a motion. This is one of those long ones.
Yeah.
Uh, hang on.
You can always ask the attorney if what?
Yes. Can you go through the suggestions again, please?
All right. The applicant agreed to comply with all of the recommendations in the board engineer and planners' reports. The proposed monument sign will comply with size and height under the borough code, the town code. The applicant will obtain necessary permits from NJDOT and DEP. All right. And the existing generator will be screened at the front. Those are all these ones from the engineering report. The applicant has also agreed to add a landscaping plan for review and consultation with the Parks and Forestry Department and agrees to comply with their recommendations regarding installing shrubbery and grass in the parking areas. And I think that was everything. I'm not going to go through all of the planning ones, but...
What was the decision on the sidewalk?
We were going to discuss it.
Oh, okay.
The sidewalk was discussed.
Personally, I would like the idea that if there was some way to have a sidewalk from at least the back of the gas station to their driveway, I'm not going to ask beyond that, because that's actually DOT property.
Yeah.
I would find that useful.
That makes sense to me, too.
Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I don't want it to interfere with your construction and all, so...
So from the BP to the driveway?
We would, and we'll do it immediately at our property line, so we have the same issue with the neighbors. We would probably, there's a little portion of where the fence opens up, still on our property.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then you'll be applying for it with DOT and pending their approval?
If necessary.
So what I would do is I'll update it on the plan that I will send to DOT for the letter of no objection.
Yeah.
And I'll have it, I'll match it.
Perfect.
It looks like about 40 linear feet of sidewalk were required, so it's not terribly long.
Take the microphone.
Oh, let me. Yeah, just want to see. Just want to see. So there's this little portion where the fence, so probably the end there a little bit closer to the right-of-way, and then right after where that fence ends probably is where we'll put it, right after where that end. We'll do it along this area of the property. Yes.
All right. Is that everything?
Those are all my notes.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second a motion.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
De Piero?
Yes.
Meili?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right. And so the application is passed?
Thank you.
Before we go on to our next cases, we're going to take a few-minute break.
A courtesy break.
A courtesy break, yes. All right. We are reconvening the meeting of the Precipity Troy Hills Planning Board for October 2, 2023. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich?
Yeah.
Councilman De Piero?
Here.
Mr. Meili?
Here.
Mr. Napolitano?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Von Aiken?
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Here. Well, before we go into this, we have two interested members of the public who like to see things that they like to stay all the way in the back. There isn't going to be anybody here if you want to come up close. Oh, good.
But can you see the map?
These, these are the other ones.
Okay. So what we are here for is the discussion on the master plan consistent review, consistency reviews for 249 Pomeroy Road, Block 737, Lot 3. Do you want to handle them together or separately?
We'll go through them one at a time.
Okay. So we'll start with the 249 Pomeroy Road.
All right. So we're here for Mr. Chairman's End Master Plan Consistency Review. The board remembers back in April, we did a redevelopment study, and the board ultimately deemed 249 Pomeroy an area in need of redevelopment on, or the council, I'm sorry, on April 18th. To give you a little background, this is a 9.13-acre site. It's identified as Block 737, Lot 3, also known as 249 Pomeroy Road. It hosts an approximately 96,000-square-foot, single-story warehouse-type building and the associated parking lots. It is currently zoned SED 5A. The Specialized Economic District. We'll go straight into what we're going to allow here. So if you... Nope. Sorry, I lost my page here. So for the permitted uses, they are on Page 37. It's just warehouses. Warehousing is currently permitted in the SED 5A district, so there really isn't a change there. There are a number of accessory uses, which are pretty standard, related to zero-mission vehicles, any ancillary structures that would normally be associated with a warehouse-type use, offices within the area, retail space, cafeterias for the exclusive use of employees, any indoor/outdoor recreational amenities, dining areas, a potential gatehouse or security guardhouse, trash recycling, solar panels, and construction staging and for sales trailers as needed during construction. As far as the building limit controls, you know, we're not really making a change to the minimum lot size. Remain five acres, the minimum lot width, 200. We're anticipating, you know, the property lots stay the same. For minimum setback, there's been a bit of a change here. Off of Pomeroy Road, it's going to be reduced down to five feet. What's currently required is 100 feet. So this is, it's a pretty significant difference, but given the location here, you have Pomeroy Road, and right beyond that, you have 287. There are also some potential environmental constraints where a buffer may be needed due to wetlands to the east of the property. So that would impact exactly where the building is located. All other property boundaries would be at 40 feet. This is actually going to be an increase from what currently exists on the site. If you can see on the aerial image there, the back of the building is only probably about 10 to 15 feet from the current rear setback there, so that will offer an improvement there. As far as coverage, the maximum building coverage that's going to be permitted is 40%. This is a slight increase from the 35% that is currently permitted in that zone. And again, the impervious coverage goes up to 90%, which is an increase from the 70% that is permitted there. And that is largely due to discussions with developers and what is actually capable of being put on this site to have adequate circulation and parking loading, et cetera, with the building. Talk a little bit about the parking. So as we're aware, the current standards for warehousing is required, predicated on the number of employees, which is somewhat problematic in figuring those numbers out, especially when we're dealing with applicants who are building spec warehouses and don't have a tenant. So in this one, we are using the standard of one space per 2,500 square feet of gross floor area, which is pretty standard within the warehouse environment. We require, you know, a five-foot setback for all parking areas, driveways, circulation aisles. Voting deliveries are required to have a minimum of a 12-by-55-foot space, one for each 20,000-square-feet of warehouse facilities. And the most important part about this presentation is that we address the master plan consistency. So the township adopted its most recent comprehensive master plan in 2020. This area is within the future uses for light industrial warehousing land use category. So this plan is consistent with that and those uses. The master plan also further supports an economic policy that encourages the redevelopment and infill development of existing commercial and office areas that are vacant and in need of reinvestment as the council declared this an area in need of redevelopment. They recognize that, and this plan further supports that and allows this site to be developed in a way that is feasible for the market at this time. So if anyone has any questions about this? Yeah.
Yeah. So it seems as if the property will continue to maintain its existing use roughly, you know, as being light industrial warehousing, which is great. We, you know, that area needs to preserve that. But all of the things that you discussed seem to be things that are appropriate for discussion during the site plan. Why are we providing all these changes to the parameters of the property now instead of just allowing the, you know, the prospective property owner to come to us with these proposals as variances instead?
Right. And, you know, we do have to create a redevelopment plan regardless, because this is, it has been deemed an area in need of redevelopment. You do, that is the next step of the process. We've made some changes to the requirements to encourage the development. If it had been feasible to be developed, you know, we'd like to think that it would have been already under the current standards. So there is some relaxation in those, taking into consideration this specific property and the shape of it and its location. You know.
Yeah. But your presentation offered some pretty specific changes, which seem like, you know, these are things that since they are so specific, it leads me to think that there must be some future design in mind. I would rather those be presented to us during site plan.
Right.
Rather than without being able to see the context of how those things are put into the property.
All right. I'm just going to ask this question. This really just looks to me like a relaxation of the bulk standards.
The buffers are definitely being...
Right, but there's no residential in the immediate vicinity.
No, because you've got the highway right along. It's an industrial area, yeah.
And that's, so I'm looking at it as just a relaxation of the bulk standards because it is an appropriate area for where we would normally grant most of these variances, so that...
And some of them are improvements over what's currently existing that, you know, had gotten approvals.
I would anticipate that some applicants might look at that and say, oh, well, I don't have to fight so hard for this or worry about somebody saying this is wrong.
And certainly during site plan, you can push for, you know, other things that you think are important.
Yeah, it's just when they come to site plan, and these are already acceptable,
Yeah.
you know, constraints that are, or rather, buffers, et cetera, we don't have any room to push back if we disagree with them. So by allowing them upfront without any context from how they look on the property, et cetera, it's more difficult for me.
I understand. You know, we analyzed what was feasible on this property and what works with the market to try and get you a good project here. That's the goal, to get this redeveloped.
So five-foot buffer frontage? I'm not sure I know where I've ever seen a building five foot off in an industrial zone.
Given the, there's no, there's no neighbor on the front. You have the highway there. It is lower than you would do in many areas, but because of the unique location, it's far more understandable.
And I agree. You don't have pedestrian traffic, you know, but you potentially have maybe a two... but you potentially have maybe a two, two-story wall in five feet away from the roadway. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the, the, the presentation assumed that we understood that there might be some environmentally, sensitive areas in the back. And so by being able to move the building forward, we maintain the size of the building.
Okay.
And, and its capacity, rather than trying to fit the building into our required setback with the additional setbacks that might be created by the environmental requirements.
Okay, that seems pretty reasonable.
And there's also some grade change on that property, so that, that plays into it also.
That was, that was what I was hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one?
Any members of the board have?
I have a question about, on page 37, uh, permitted answer three uses and structures. Uh, letter I, solar panels, does that mean solar panels in the parking lot or on the building or both or neither or?
It, it could be either.
What's it, what is it?
It, it could be either.
It could be either, okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Canjiano, do you have any?
No, I don't have anything to offer. Just that, so Pomeroy Road is, you know, I looked, looking at the aerial, it, it dead ends and that's the next property. This is the last property, it looks like, or second to last property on Pomeroy Road. Unique location there.
Is it reasonable to ask for comments from the public? Yep, uh, any members of the public wish to come up and make any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none? Okay, I am being told that we need a consistency determination and then any recommendations for any changes to this that, that might make it even more compatible. So you have, anybody here? Have anything that they wish to speak to or?
So you ready for a motion then, right?
Uh, just, uh, just caught my eye that maximum height is 50 feet? So that, is that okay for our fire departments? Can they handle a 50-foot building?
We, we have two six-story buildings in them.
Okay. Okay, oh, then that's, that's a likely yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Would the fire department in that area, that would respond to it?
Oh, it'd probably be Department 6.
Looks like it's 6, and so is the terrace.
And you could certainly make the recommendation that they review that part.
Oh, that certainly would come up during site plan because they'd need to go to the fire department in order to get approval.
That's a fair, a fair point. All right. So I guess we're at a stage where we would move that we find it consistent with the master plan and?
Technically, it has to be not inconsistent.
I, I, I'm sorry, the double negative always gets me. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'm not sure I can word it. Motion to, to approve this plan, which is not consistent, not inconsistent with the master plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Didich, all right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Meili?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right, so that moves us on to the next one, which is 2 Campus Drive and 3 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.20 and Lot 3.7, master plan consistency review.
Thank you, uh, Fana White. All right, so I, I think we all probably remember this one pretty well. This was, um, just a couple of weeks ago, we had the preliminary investigation to deem this area needed redevelopment. Um, this is 2 and 3 Campus, Blocks 202, 3.20 and 3.12. The council declared an area in need on September 19th. We also saw the site plan application for this, these two properties that same night, um, for the planning board. So this, this plan is really the same as what was approved on that day. You know, they, they had received a couple of variances. Those have been incorporated into this plan, so they will not need to come back for those variances. It, you know, it is basically identical to what is approved. This just allows the township to take advantage of, um, the different mechanisms for redevelopment that are permitted by redevelopment law. You know, it's currently zoned as affordable housing districts, uh, 3A and 3B. What is permitted there is the, I can get back down to the page, is the multifamily development that this board approved a couple of weeks ago. There's really nothing in this that has changed or would affect those approvals. As far as the consistency with the master plan, just like the previous one, um, you know, the master plan was adopted in 2020. Future land use map had identified these sites for affordable housing. Um, this plan furthers that. It includes all the requirements for affordable housing. It references, um, you know, the, the ordinance. And it is repurposing, you know, vacant or formerly now demolished office building, um, into a use that the town needs. And it will further, um, the town's commitment and requirement to provide affordable housing in compliance with their fair share agreement. That's it. If anyone had any questions?
Any questions for our planner on this?
The, um, note of, um, what, housing? If this is the same project from, I guess, two weeks ago, that the gentleman testified that, I believe it was, it, it's going to go number of bedrooms as opposed to number of units? Is that, is this the same?
Right, right, um, so they, they still have to provide a certain amount of units, but, um, a portion of those will be for counted as bedrooms because of.
Yeah, you count bedrooms instead of.
Right, you can't, I see you explained last time.
But it, it still meets the.
So that doesn't change 4.3.10, right?
4.3.10.
On page 12, 22? Does that have to be worded differently or that's just, it is what it is? It's fine.
I mean, double check it, but. Yeah, it, it still facilitates the.
Not to say to include bedroom, no, okay.
Right, right.
And then I, another question I have is, I feel like this, has this been around for, for years, this Campus Drive 2 and 3? Um, especially for the one that is south, I guess that's 3? 3.12? I mean, it's been vacant now how many years? How do we know there is not an endangered species there now or threatened species living in that, uh, wetland area? I mean, it's been done disturbed now for, I mean, I could swear we heard this case back in 2021.
Right, so they, they do have to maintain a buffer from there.
Okay.
You know, they, they have to get their DEP approvals, which I believe they already have received. So, you know, there, there's a certain amount of due diligence that's involved.
There are big setbacks, there are big setbacks from any wetlands.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not going to, they can't disturb the wetlands.
200 feet or 300 feet from wetlands? Two?
It's usually 50 or 150, depending on critters.
Yeah, okay. And they're, they're going to maintain that also, right?
Right, right. They, they still need to go through, you know, or they've largely gone through the process already. This is just providing, you know, that mechanism for the township to use, you know, what's available to them by the redevelopment law.
So the signs are already approved to the variance? Do we have to build them onto this as well?
They, they're built in here already. Otherwise, they.
There's all, it's already been approved. Why do we have to make it approved in perpetuity is, is I guess my point. Because that's what this does, right? Am I wrong?
I, I mean, it, it helps facilitate that project that was already approved.
But it also makes it so every project afterwards is, you know.
For, for the, this site, I mean.
Unless zoning gets changed in the future.
Every, every project is based on its own circumstances.
But now we're applying.
This is not cookie cutter.
But now we're applying a zone on top of it, which permits this, right? That, this is essentially establishing an overlay zone that now permits that sign that I spoke about.
Yeah, for this, this particular kind of project on these two sites, it does not permit it anywhere else in the town.
And, and again, these are the types of things, I, I don't like them being so strongly prescribed within the zoning. I think they should be part of the site plan.
Redevelopment plans tend to be a little more flexible in that sense because they, you know, you, you get to the point where you're, you're deeming an area in need of redevelopment because it hasn't, hasn't moved forward for whatever the reason may be. So, um, there, there definitely is more give and take on that kind of project.
And you think the signing is going to change how the, the property looks in the eyes of prospective tenants? I, I mean, this was, this is an, this is an overreach of, of what we need to do here. That's, that's what I'm going to say.
It certainly did not go in the normal progression of things.
Sure.
All right, any other comments or discussion points?
Is this the, is this the last time we're going to hear about 2 and 3 Campus? I mean, they, they should start building on this thing already?
Unless they make some sort of change to the point, I think, I think we should be good.
I mean, I've been hearing this.
We can't, we can't, we can't, uh, you know, promise anything at this point.
Any other questions? Points? Any discussion? I'm going to ask if there are any members of the public who have any questions or comments on this, determination of, uh, consistency with the master plan, root. Hearing and seeing none.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Now, let's see if I can do it right this time. I move the redevelopment plan for 2 and 3 Campus Drive is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Second, Didich.
Any discussion? Nora, would you call the roll?
Didich?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Meili?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
With my stated objections, yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right. Is there anything else, Nora, that we need to consider for tonight?
No, no, except that remember, uh, we do not have a second meeting this month.
So the 16th, everybody gets off with full pay? Those of us who are volunteers will gratefully accept that zero in the check. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Anybody opposed?
I can't harmonize that well, so we'll just let it go.
Well, I left that as the, as the motion and the.